Okay, it's approximately 7:00 PM. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Will the clerk please call the roll? It's Monday, May 22nd, 2023.
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop? Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item is approval of minutes from the previous meeting of April 10th, 2023. Is there a motion?
So moved.
They're second.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Any substantial corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Additions to the agenda. Mr. Chair.
Oh, okay. Yes, I would like to make a motion that ordinance number 2023-05-016, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain real estate, namely 205 North Race Street in Urbana and 131 North Race Street in Urbana, be moved to the June 5th special city council meeting.
I'll second that.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Mary Alice, and that's item 2B on the agenda. And it's due to the fact that we're, a couple of other additional items are going to be added to the agreement before we bring it back. Will all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
That's an ordinance, mayor, it calls for both.
Just to move it to a different agenda?
Well, no.
We're not moving to pass it, we're just moving it to the, okay. So this is a vote to move it to a June 5th special city council meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes. Next item are presentations and public input, and I think we'll go with presentations first. And first up is the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2024 through 2028. And we have Public Works Director Tim Cowan and City Engineer John Zeeman presenting.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Get this thing up and we'll get rolling. All right, as mayor said, this is an overview of our capital improvement plan for FY '24 through '28, today, May 22nd. Tim Cowan, Public Works Director, John Zeeman, City Engineer, and Carmen Franks, our Assistant City Engineer, could not join us tonight, but she worked diligently on this as well as alongside a number of other people. I did, actually, I want to give one quick plug out to Carol and Will for the transformation they made prior to us getting here with this thing. I think they made great progress in making it more digestible for the public and others, and we're just trying to foster that now. So what is it comprised of? So it's our capital replacement and investment expenditures. It also includes operations and maintenance expenditures that are either outside of our scope or our scale that we can complete in public works. So we have a number of operations and maintenance programs within this as well. The focus is maintaining and improving our public infrastructure assets, which we've categorized into eight categories, including bridges, public facilities, light signals and signs, road pavement, sidewalks and paths, sanitary sewers, and stormwater facilities. It's funded through a group of dedicated funding sources, including the Capital Reinvestment and Improvement Fund, which is funded through general fund transfers and unrestricted, our local motor fuel tax fund, the state motor fuel tax fund, that's allocated to us by the state, sanitary sewer benefit fund, and the stormwater utility fund. It's also, sometimes also subsidized with TIF funds and grants, like CDBG and other specialized grants, when they're applicable to projects, either in a location or the type of work that's being done. Activities within this are typically project-based, so we're trying to put a whole project together or a whole operations program or a whole maintenance program together, so they're larger investments to help us implement them more efficiently. What is it comprised of? It's been broken down into six sections, including the executive summary, the capital asset summary, transportation section, facility section, sewer system section, and the fund report for the whole plan. The full CIP will be available online this evening at a link that'll be provided, as well as this presentation will also be there for public review and digestion and comment. And then sometime in the next month, with the budget ordinance, we'll be bringing a CIP resolution for approval. So from today, you're going to have 30-ish plus days to kind of, you know, take in, review, comment additionally, as will the public, and then any modifications and things we would be bringing with the final CIP and a resolution for approval in approximately a month. How is it made? So annually, our process breaks down into a few steps. We review our asset summaries to update them and make sure they're still applicable. We review our operations and maintenance programs and the needs that are outside of what we can complete. We review our capital projects list, and then we work on prioritizing projects, and I'll go into a little bit more detail on the prioritization in a moment. We've started to complete partner outreach in the last couple of years that I don't know that was done diligently in the past, but as you can see at the bottom, we coordinated with Champagne, Savoy, UCSD, the Parks District, the Forest Preserve, MTD, and then two of our franchise utilities, Ameren and Illinois American, to really try to consolidate work. So if they're doing capital projects within our areas or we're doing things that are adjacent to theirs, that we're trying to coordinate those efforts, so we're not doing them on top of each other. Once we've completed that, we do financial projections for our revenue and start to schedule projects within our constraints of what we are projecting for the outlay. And then we'll review our fund balances as well as part of that to see, you know, in some instances, we have healthy fund balances that we're going to start to try to chew away on because we have overwhelming needs. And then every year, we kind of look at this for options for improvement, so it's an iterative improvement process. The team, as you can see over here, a slew of people, many Public Works employees, including engineers and operations, sustainability, and then also folks from the executive department, including Carol and Will, our finance department, Elizabeth, Chris, and Ally, and then Wallace Arnold, our GIS specialist who started with us about six months ago, a little over six months ago. So this is kind of a high-level view of how we prioritize stuff. So we have the restricted funds, as in the local motor fuel tax, the state motor fuel tax, the stormwater utility fee, and the sanitary sewer benefit fee. They're all restricted, more or less treated as enterprise funds, so we identify the needs that can be funded by those, and we try to fund out of those first before we go and tap into our unrestricted funds. So, you know, we look at our operations and maintenance needs first and then try to get those shored up and then identify capital projects that can be funded of these, and then anything that can't be funded within these individual funds goes into basically competition within the CRNI unrestricted funds. So we have, those four funds have projects that come out of them that are typically unfunded. And then we have a number of other capital needs that don't have dedicated funding sources, such as the facilities, as you're all well aware of, we're looking to go out and bond on that at this time. And then they go in and we kind of go through another iterative process of what we did in the dedicated funds with what's remaining, looking at operations, maintenance, and capital projects. And, you know, eventually, this is going to lead to an unfunded capital projects backlog that will better inform how well we're doing with our capital revenues to support those things. And that'll kind of, hopefully, it'll shore up, you know, revenue discussions around projects that, if they're unfunded, whether we want to pursue alternative funding options for them. But today's presentation, three parts, the executive summary, the asset management summary, and then the project summary. So financial overview, in fiscal year '24, we're targeting capital improvement plan spending of $31.3 million. The five-year average for this CIP is $20.6 million, substantially down from that, primarily because the next year is when we're targeting the major facilities improvements currently that we're going to go after bonding for. The total five-year CIP spending is $102.9 million. I just wanted to point out that approximately 23% of that is pending grants that we're pursuing, primarily for a few large, major projects that, if we get the grants, then they'll go off as planned. If we don't, we'll either be compartmentalizing, value engineering, or looking for other alternatives. Mayor and City Council goals, progress within the CIP, there are a handful of goals from the strategic goals that you all passed that apply to the CIP. The first section was really in asset management planning, and just a little progress update on those. The stormwater asset management plan we briefed you on should be coming to a close and completion here, I'm going to say, in the first quarter of fiscal year '24. We'll bring back information from the results of that. The traffic signal asset management plan was just recently completed, and some of the recommendations from it have been incorporated into the CIP. The street lighting asset management plan is probably also in the same completion timeframe as the stormwater asset management plan to be completed, probably in the first quarter of next fiscal year. We've just recently started the sanitary sewer asset management plan with internal forces, and the bridge asset management plan is kind of pending, starting on getting some other bandwidth to do so. Equity and quality of life, in 2021, I believe, we implemented funding for the equity and quality of life projects. Since then, some of the progress that's happened is we completed the community engagement portion of that to get feedback, and then we identified projects and programmed projects between Exec, Public Works, and BPAC. And those projects are all now essentially an implementation, either in design or headed towards construction at this point, to spend that $2 million of funding. One other piece of that, and as you'll see in this plan, is we've got another round of equity and quality of life proposed in FY '25 and '26, basically, as soon as those wrap up, to do another round of that type of stuff. One other thing that was in the strategic plans for equity and quality of life was trying to incorporate more equity within our project prioritization planning for the CIP, and we did some of that this year. John will touch on that a little bit, but he did some independent review of some different aspects there, and we did end up incorporating some equity considerations within our transportation prioritization metrics this year. And then sustainable facilities was the last thing within the strategic goals that really applied to CIP stuff. As you know, the fire stations, through design, will be evaluating options for renewable energy on those. We've also, we're about 50% of the way through the first-year power consumption of the citywide storage facility, which was recently completed, to define some budgetary numbers if we wanted to do solar on that facility. The facilities master plan implementation, the highlight is that we still need to borrow money. You know, we've tried to shore up as we can, but there's still going to be a need to borrow money to complete that, the bulk of which tied to the fire stations, as I believe you're all aware. Staffing vacancies and limiting CIP implementation, now, if you look the last couple of years over, we've done a mid-year update with folks to try to kind of let you know, like, we came to you with a plan, and this is how we're progressing through it, and what we found is that's kind of aligning with our engineering staffing. So two years ago, we were about 50% staff, and we completed about 50% of our plan, and then last year, we made some headway, and we're closer to 65%, 70% of staff, and we're targeting completing about 65% to 70% of our CIP in this year. The good news on that is we have just opened a deliberate recruitment to finalize some of those vacancies within our engineering division, which hopefully should get us in a good footing moving forward. Construction costs, they still remain high, we're still subject to this unpredictable inflation. The National Highway Construction Cost Index is up 46% from two years ago. I know we talked about 21% last year, and it's still pretty volatile, so we've done our best job in estimating, but it's still very unpredictable at this time, and the result of that is really that it limits how much we can do. And we don't know when all of that's going to come down. We have seen some relaxation here and there, we've seen some better prices come in, but it's not, there's not a rhyme or reason to it quite yet, it doesn't seem like. The MWDVBE contracting success for engineering services, one thing we wanted to highlight is, we don't have a formal goal as a city for this, but we did take some initiative within our engineering services procurement over the last two years to incorporate the participation with minority women, disadvantaged, and veteran businesses as part of our selection process, and what we're able to do was we ended up incorporating 14% by value of the total contracts for that, through that metric, and we just wanted to celebrate a little bit of that success in that regard. I know that's an interest of many of you on the board. And then grants, so, you know, in lieu of the staffing vacancies, we're still working towards trying to get money from outside the city, so. And just a little overview, pretty successful, honestly, so what we've already got awarded of the 33, 33 and change, 33 million, just about on the dot, that we've targeted, about 9.4 of that is already programmed, awarded, or allocated via CDBG, ARPA, ITEP, STBG, and DECO, a couple of those that you might not be familiar with. ITEP is an Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program that's annually funded. It used to be federally funded more so, and the state has now, feds pulled some money, states added some money. It actually makes the program a little bit easier for administration, which is great for us. And then the STBG and STPU, those are really like the local, because we're in a metropolitan planning organization, we have dedicated transportation funds for us to spend regionally, and those are towards projects that regionally scored high for Urbana to fund, and that's the design of the Lincoln Avenue/Washita/Clarny section, as well as the Florida Avenue design that we've been discussing, pursuing the RACE grant for. And then DECO is Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, and that's a special funding that we were able to get through, one of the political entities had awarded this for the fire station reconstruction projects. Some of the big pending awards, our big projects, RACE grant for Florida, we've already got our second application for that, the first one, we did not, we were not awarded, so the second one has been resubmitted, scaled down slightly because we were able to get ITEP funding for the side path on that project. The Safe Streets for All is another special grant for transportation improvements here, and we applied for that once and did not get award, we're pending reapplication now for that section of Lincoln Avenue from Washita/Clarny, the construction portion. We're going to go ahead and get the design done for that section, get the design done for Florida. Being shovel-ready with project design helps those, so if we're not awarded those, we'll be more apt for award in the future. And then the local STBG, STPU funds through COATs for the Lincoln Avenue from Green to Florida, we've got that kind of forecasted later in the CIP in hopes of getting that programmed in with the other regional projects here. And then we applied for this Illinois EPA 319 grant for some Boneyard Creek improvements that will essentially include better water quality and more accessibility for cleaning, siltation, and things out of the Boneyard Creek area. This is just for kind of the front-end planning and design, and there's an opportunity to then reapply for construction post-design. So asset management summary, high-level stuff, the asset management plan method that we've kind of approached over the last couple of years is really like, more like lifecycle considerations around our public infrastructure assets, and then we have master plans that inform on more of a 10- to 20-year cycle for major projects. And then we have our capital improvement plan that we're talking about today, which is really our five-year outlay of what can we do. High-level overview of asset management plans, getting a good inventory of what we've got, valuing it, determining the age and condition of those things, determining acceptable levels of service for the public infrastructure, considering lifecycle activities and costs, risk associated with funding them or not funding them, and then impacts and response to growth in the future. So these are very holistic plans around our public infrastructure to kind of give us large macro information on how we're managing or how we're not managing things. Asset valuation, as you can see, pavement is still the bulk of costs associated with our public infrastructure at 44%. If you pair that with other transportation-related things, like bridges, light signals and signs, sidewalks and paths, it's about 58% of the total. You can see stormwater facilities at 23%, sanitary sewers at 13% are also costly infrastructure for us to maintain. The total valuation we have for this year is $1.5 billion with a B of all our public infrastructure. You know, it's not a small effort to maintain this and do so well for the people. You know, this is very impacted by the National Highway Construction Cost Index at this point, and as we complete more of these asset management plans, they'll help us refine our estimates, hopefully a little bit better, but these are large-scale, like, planning-type numbers for us to kind of wrap our arms around this. Looking at the asset management summary versus what we've proposed spending over the next five years, the top section here is really targets developed from the asset management summary. How much should we be spending per year to fund lifecycle replacement and recommended operations and maintenance of these facilities and public infrastructures? And what that boiled down to is $36.5 million per year. What we are spending, within capital reinvestment and improvement, we're spending about $15.4 million, and then $13.1 million on operations and maintenance, which I would denote, 7.9 of that 13.1 is within the public works operating budget for us to maintain things, and the remainder of the other 5.2 is programmed within the CIP, so that's why these two don't add to the 20.6 that you saw earlier, because we're actually funding another $8 million out of the public work. So total, what we're funding for public infrastructure asset management is $28.5 million on average for the next five years, which what that is, is it results in about an $8 million a year funding gap between our capital investment, operations, and maintenance, based on our asset management summaries, which they're still highly theoretical, and as we get better information and more definitive information, that will fine-tune, and that could go down or it could go up. But that's where we're at right now through this CIP. We are essentially underfunding in theory on these things, but there's a number of other considerations that go into this stuff. This is really just a visualization of the same information, the large gray circles kind of our target in theory, and then in the next five years, this bold black line and the different things that fund it. As you see, we have dedicated sources on the inside, and as you work out, they're less dedicated as we go to, you know, dedicated unrestricted funds, then grants that we've been awarded, then grants that are pending, and then bonding to help make up the difference, and then we still have this additional funding gap, which, as we discussed, is that $8 million per year within this five-year CIP. We'll go into project summary. Happy to go back over any of this stuff if anybody likes, but we'll get into the projects a little bit, and I'll kick things off, and then I'll hand them over to John. So the facilities master plan projects, high-level overview, we've, the citywide storage facility was completed within FY '23, it's operational, there's a couple snapshots of the facility there for your viewing, it's a 23,000-square-foot facility that's used for equipment and vehicle storage and other storage by Public Works, police, and fire departments currently. The city building lobby reconfiguration that's happening right outside these doors, it's a $1.14 million interim improvement to the city building to enhance doing business and operations here at the city building, that's slated to be completed this summer still. The fire stations, which are in the queue, the $11.5 million up from the $10.5, that number actually includes land acquisition costs that we've discussed recently, and, you know, is on the docket, part of that's on the docket for this evening. We are entering design into that phase, we are receiving submittals from construction managers to assist through the design and construction later this month still, and the targeted date still is hopefully to be getting design underway and to a point of bidding later this winter, probably January timeframe currently is what we're targeting, and then construction would be probably going into FY '25 at that point. The Public Works campus rehab, we really just bundled all the various Public Works facility needs into one because it made more sense to kind of get a single individual to come in and help us program those improvements before we completed those. That includes rehabbing the current Public Works facility, renovating 704 Glover into a That includes rehabbing the current public works facility, uh, renovating, uh, seven oh four Glover into a fleet, uh, facility with document storage. And then, uh, doing some other minor upgrades on our site and then, uh, repurposing, uh, our current arbor shop, uh, to be a storage facility for LRC. And, and the big part of that is bringing, uh, our arbor and landscaping employees back into the public works hub over on Glover and, and out of the landfill site. Uh, we have a number of other minor rehab efforts, including ADA enhancements, security enhancements, um, outfitting the citywide storage building with additional storage, items, and then the, the annual general rehab, which really just takes care of, um, made larger scale unplanned capital projects such as boilers, heaters, HVAC, as well as other, uh, more minor improvements. With that, I will hand it off to John Zeeman.
Okay. Thanks, Tim. So, you'll see a noticeable difference in our styles here. I have zero slides. Do want to again recognize the good work of our, uh, GIS specialists in the rest of the city and getting our GIS capabilities, uh, advanced. What I'm actually going to do is take this opportunity to do a little kind of demo of our CIP website. So, uh, the way I'd encourage council and the members of the public to get this, easiest way I know how is to update your browser periodically and then go to a web search of Urbana, Illinois CIP. So, this one will pop up as the top webpage. Just going to think about it. And we're going to be, get a chance to see, you know, hey, it's available for review. The attachments to the bottom of the page and we have a review period until nominally till Juneteenth, um, as we're bringing the, uh, planning to bring the resolution for adoption, uh, that twentieth on that Tuesday. So, um, you know, for somebody who wants to take a real deep dive, we've got all sorts of master plans, asset management plans. Tim's presentation's on this here already. Um, and here are all the, all the documents in its one hundred and seven pages glory. But first I just want to jump into the map quickly. This is through our GIS portal. Um, this will show, uh, mostly capital projects with some, some maintenance programs as well. So, you get in here, this, uh, layer window will pop up, let's pull it to the side. Um, we did some color coding, try to make this, uh, a little easier to digest. Basically, the blue, we've got blue, green, red and yellow. The green colors are the projects that are scheduled for construction this fiscal year. The yellow ones are scheduled for studies and plans in this fiscal year. We've got some red projects that are in the CIP, but in the future years of like FY twenty-five through FY twenty-eight. And we went and threw some blue projects on there. Those are in our backlog. They didn't make the cut this time. Um, as resources would allow, we would add them in. But want to, and then, you know, you get a chance to explore. Um, of course you click on them, pops up with the basic information, name of the project. Yeah, what's the kind of basic timeline? This one's, uh, Shared Use Path at Baker's Lane. It's one of our ITEP projects. Transportation facilities or sewers, estimated project budget, some timeline and basic description of it. So, I'd like to do briefly, and, you know, definitely entertain any questions, anybody wants to discuss anything. Um, so I fly around, something catches your eye. I'm going to turn off everything but construct, or but the construction, just touch on a couple of projects. Because I don't quite have enough time. I don't want to take all your time and touch on all of them, but, uh, we've got one, the Philo Road resurfacing going from Windsor to Colorado. Uh, we're planning to go to bids in November with that one. Um, and if anybody's keeping score at home, you may remember this was originally called Philo, Colorado and Anderson. We had ambitions of combining it with, uh, multiple other street segments in this area. But as we got into design, we realized that the condition of Colorado and Anderson, um, would not be a good idea for resurfacing. Um, so their scopes increased. Uh, we plan to do Colorado and fiscal year twenty-five. And then Anderson Street, being a lower priority street segment, has got kicked out of the CIP. It's still a backlog project, but we'll have to, um, identify where that will fit in later. But, so we're looking at, Philo Road coming up here in, uh, to start, uh, early in twenty twenty-four calendar year. I know the fiscal years and calendar years, I'm, I'm still getting myself a little confused about that, but, um, okay. Another project to touch on briefly, have a, um, sewer project. This one's on, between Main Street and Boneyard Creek. Let me get that box over here. Uh, kind of near the Phillips Rec Center, McCullough Street. This is an example of a, an existing storm sewer that runs under a couple of buildings and it's constructed of brick. So, it's not the, uh, it's an older construction, uh, not in the greatest condition. So, this is a high priority for us to replace with a storm sewer that's, you know, basically not under another building. So, we got this scheduled for construction and, uh, later in FY twenty-four. Get those plans together, put in a new pipe and then fill and abandon the other one in place. Um, to where it reduces. It's essentially, it's not a problem now, but this is a risk management, um, approach where, uh, kind of a theme you'll see in our sewer sections is that, um, in the absence of, uh, as much inspection data as we'd like to have right now, what we are doing is identifying some high-risk, um, locations where we want to try to, uh, take care of problems before they arise. Zoom back out. And I will switch over to the studies and plans, go to the yellow. So, just into computer and, uh, paperwork this fiscal year, uh, my specialty. But, uh, the couple of projects I want to touch on here. We have, uh, we're going to notice there's a little more emphasis in the Cunningham Avenue, Tiff District, Tiff four. Um, the next couple of years, that, um, Tiff District is come, that Tiff is coming, uh, near the end of its life. And so, we've got some, you know, desire to make some infrastructure improvements, uh, maintenance in that area. One project that, uh, came up as we were considering the Tiff, uh, eligibility is this Country Club Road and Perkins Road. Let me zoom in a little bit more. Uh, so basically, uh, within the city limits here is the city limits cut off here, uh, a little ways east of Cunningham. And a bit of Country Club Road there. We've got, uh, poor pavement condition and also some, uh, you know, historic drainage problems here on the surface of Perkins Road. Give us an opportunity to address those, um, and, uh, convert that to more of an urban cross-section, uh, than what's there right now. So, we got that for plans starting this year and with construction to follow after that. Uh, another one to touch on would be another sewer project. Hope I'm not giving anybody motion sickness here. I know this is a, the problem with a lot of zooming and panning and stuff. So, we're coming into, uh, neighborhood of the city, kind of bounded by Race Street, Florida Avenue, Orchard Street, and Carl Park. We have, uh, an area of town where we've got some, uh, historic sewer that a lot of the sewers were constructed in back, backyard easements. Um, they may have been combined sewers of sanitary and storm originally. They're based on the way they were constructed. But right now they're just storm sewers. We don't have combined sewers in Urbana. But the thing we want to investigate with feasibility study is are all of these backyard sewers necessary? What are they currently being used for? And are there opportunities for us to, um, either abandon them or, or create alternative routes for whatever, uh, you know, sump lines, uh, drain pipes, backyard drainage that they are currently serving? Probably not, not too surprising. There's, uh, many, uh, there's many private structures and improvements built on top of these sewers. And access to them is challenging to say the least. Um, and so we want to, this is again kind of a, a risk management measure where we want to try to get ahead of it. Yeah. So, I mean, really just a few projects to touch on. And I was going to step out of this map and encourage you guys to explore on your own unless anybody has any questions upfront.
Is that the end of the presentation?
We can walk through some of the project books if you want specifically. Um, what we would encourage really in the next however many days is now that we have an interactive resource that we didn't have before, is people can actually go in and look in areas that they're concerned about or interested in, uh, to get more information on those. All of these are actually paired with project information on the CIP page. Um, you know, we didn't go over some of the big projects that we've been over in the past, such as the Florida Avenue projects, the Lincoln projects. Um, we've talked about those in our grant pursuits and things like that. They are all in planning phase. They're all moving forward. They're just a slow chug on some of the bigger capital projects. Um, one thing I think I would say high level on, on our projects overview is we're doing a lot more operations and maintenance than we have in the past. It's probably less attractive to the, to the naked eye, but it's a, a high necessity. So, we're bolstering up patching programs, seal coat programs, crack sealing, uh, sewer investigation programs, lining programs, which have not been here in the past. Which is some of the regard of not having, you know, big capital projects to talk about. It's not that they're not happening, but a lot more of what we're doing now is, uh, rehabilitation or, uh, preventative maintenance type stuff that has not been done in the past. And, spending more money on that is going to save us money in the future. Um, but, uh, a lot of that stuff is programmatic by areas of town rather than by specific targeted projects, we'll say. Uh, seal coat for one. We have five cycle or five sections of town that we have delineated because, uh, typically seal coating, it, it's purely preventative maintenance and it's a three to seven year cycle. That's the life you get out of it. We're targeting a five year so that everything gets hit again before it gets bad. Um, but that's, that's some of, um, you know, the overview as, as to why some of the projects were not quite as in-depth on. That's our seal coat map there. Just showing, you know, programmatically, we're targeting these areas, um, cyclically every year so that, um, rather than some streets getting missed and getting on a ten-year cycle and some streets getting attention on a three-year cycle, we're trying to at least give everything a five-year cycle. So that, uh, you know, the issues with that is once you lose your preventative maintenance windows, they're gone. You, you're not going to, i- if you go and reseal coat a road, you're not going to get five to seven years. You're going to get two to three years. So, if we can get to them before they lose their life, that's the target that we're hoping for here. And, and you'll see, uh, in the fund report of this, we've delineated this more to have an operations section, a maintenance section, and then more of a capital section. Lo- local motor fuel tax, for example, is one that you'll see in future years are purely operations and maintenance expenses at this point. You know, a lot of this stuff, you know, the, the stormwater asset management plan that we've talked about, um, as we're able to identify more defined projects for backlogs, um, we intend, we expect that backlog to grow. Um, but for the time being, that, that's where we're at. A lot of the big major capital projects, they're either already in planning. Um, I know John will be back here early June with multiple resolutions to pursue design on the Florida Avenue project, the Lincoln Avenue, Washington to Clarny project that are subject to grant funding in excess of twenty million dollars. So, the big ones are still moving along. The other ones are still in queue. Um, but operations maintenance is, is a strong focus of our CIP right now.
Thank you. We'll have time for a couple of questions if there's questions from council. Mary Alice.
Thank you. Whoops, sorry. Thank you. I love the interactive map. I think it'll make it much easier for the public to, to look at and, and ourselves as well. So, you had mentioned that, um, two of the big grants that we had, um, were not funded and that we're going for round two. Lincoln and Florida, were those the two? And then you, yeah? And then you had also mentioned that Anderson has been kind of kicked away?
Correct.
Are there any other highlights in terms of things that haven't been funded or things that were taken off of the CIP in the five-year plan?
About that.
I don't, I don't, nothing that comes to mind that's been kicked out. The Anderson project, as, as we talked about with Philo, Colorado, Anderson, Colorado's been delayed a bit and Anderson's kind of in the backlog at this point. Bring up the back, or bring up the blue.
Let's do a refresh.
If I remember correctly, we had, uh, an issue with the bridge that was failing suddenly, maybe on Washington?
Street. It's still going. Yes. That's.
And so I thought that we had to kind of reprioritize a couple of things so that we could put that at the forefront.
Yeah. And I, I don't think we've, I don't know that we've lost, uh, other than, you know, things like Anderson. Trying to think of anything else that we would have lost from that.
The, uh, well, I know the Kohler, the Kohler Avenue Bridge was knocked off as with our, we updated our prioritization scoring system. Um, and we get into that in probably, uh, ad nauseam in the report, but, um, talk about some that were, uh, bumped out by the scoring change, uh, which included, uh, taking into account, um, an equity lens and including some more, um, more of a systematic view of safety that we weren't able to do, uh, last year with some new data that RPC provided us with. And wouldn't you know, every, whenever you do a demo, stuff like this happens. So, looks like the levels aren't turning on. We're going to figure out that.
Yeah. The only other one I can think about would be the Florida Avenue, uh, at James Cheery. But I think it's just, it's still within the CIP. It's just postponed to a later date.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Sharice?
Thank you for such a, a thorough presentation regarding this. One question that, that really hit me, especially when you said, uh, billion with a B, was, um, uh, how frequently is, is there an evaluation of the Urbana infrastructure so that we can actually know the age and therefore be able, because I'm assuming to be honest that some of this reprioritization has to do with what, what is considered the life of a particular, you know, infrastructure that we have the sewer, you know, it's been up for a hundred years. Whoops. We don't kind of want to take care of that before it becomes, um, you know, a real issue. So, how frequently have we done this? Or is this the first time that you've heard of anybody doing this?
It's not that, we're definitely not the first, but, uh, here locally, looking at it with this large of a lens, I don't know that we have record of that. The intent, uh, is eventually for us to get to kind of more of a risk matrix where we look at consequence of failure and likelihood of failure of our assets, where we can marry those into our risk score to divine, define a level of service where we say, you know, once assets, assets hit a certain risk score, we want those to be in our five-year CIP. We pursue funding accordingly for that type of stuff. Now, what we're lacking right now is really that information. And we're making major efforts towards that. We've got the, uh, manhole condition assessment and GIS updates project, which is, we're hoping to award within June and get that effort started. That's going to take over a year for them to complete that effort. Um, we, uh, again, like I said, within this, our operations and maintenance expenditures have went up because we're trying to catch up on a backlog of, uh, lack of investigation of our sewer system. Ideally, a, age is a nice factor for like long-term planning, but really we want to look at condition assessment. And in lieu of age, if we have the condition assessment, we would take that over age every day. And, you know, things like what we're on now for our sewer system is we're targeting a ten-year cycle. We want to look at everything at least once every ten years so that we can make a determination on something that, you know, may last a hundred years, may last two hundred years. But if we can look at it once every ten years, we can kind of assess. It's like a wellness check as you go to the doctor, you, you, you get checked up on. We're trying to do better at that, but we're closing a lot of gaps. GIS has been a huge, uh, addition to this. Um, you know, that's the organization metric or the method for us to keep this information organized and let it live into the future. Whether I'm here or any of us are here in the future, that's the metric or, or that's the, the tool to do this with that we haven't really utilized quite to the potential that I think we could have in the past. But yeah, that, I, I would tell you, moving forward, the asset management summary that we did this year, we'd like to just continue to improve that every year. So, we're looking at this stuff at least in some regard every year. Uh, similar to like what we did with our pavement condition, uh, inspections in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, those will be up for re-scan, um, in the next year or two. To what we do annually is we see, so we had a, we essentially had a wellness check of our roadway system done in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. We got a lot of condition scores of it. We know where we land. We know, you know, it's not as great as what we would all like. And then the idea is you're, you know, every year as we complete projects, we go in and we update condition assessments with estimates. So, if we reconstruct a road, okay, it went from a thirty till one hundred. And we see whether what we're doing is making the impact that we're actually, our condition as a network is growing stagnant, still failing. But the intent would be as we, as we start to get this information is keep it up to date so we don't lose it. And then it's easier to do the analysis that, you know, we're trying to pull together with some very highly assumptive data currently.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks. Want, any other questions? Got time for one more. Grace?
Thanks much for the presentation. I really love the equity lens and some of the stuff you've got in there. I was looking for some more information on the minority veteran women-owned. I was looking for some more information on the minority veteran women-owned businesses. And I've seen the draft here. You've got some explanation. I'm trying to understand about this goal was only for the engineering services. That's a small piece of the overall one and that says you recommend that that's taken up as mayor council strategic goals rather than in here. And so, that, we do have that target of 10% and we exceeded it at 14% for engineering consultants.
Correct.
And is that when we like put out a request for someone to do the design and engineering work rather than the construction itself?
Correct.
Is what we're saying. Okay, because we don't have one for the whole construction, just the design?
Yeah, and the policies we have in place, you know, there's just, it's not as definitive. So, I think the idea is if we want to bolster that up, it really needs to be a standalone effort to do so. I think there's interest here. I think, you know, the matter is just trying to figure out that program because many have tried and not many have succeeded. And, you know, I think that will boil down to some more targeted conversations around this stuff about what are the real goals here.
You mentioned that there's a part with the Human Relations Commission and their review process also being something that could be addressed?
Yeah, currently, you know, the policy is that the Human Relations Commission reviews and approves all vendors with contracts over $25,000. Again, if you dig into the policies, there's not quite as much probably definition to those as would be easy for quantification. There's a lot of like qualifying information but not quantifiable information in there to target these things. And then, you know, the other thing with all these programs is when you build them, you have to build ways for reporting and metrics and things of that nature.
Well, thank you very much. Encourage the public to explore the maps and if people have questions, they should direct them to...
Either of us.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next presentation is the quarterly update of the mayor council strategic goals. Carol?
Thank you. As I usually do, I'm just going to hit a couple of the highlights and then if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them. Several of the action items that are included in the mayor council goals for the two-year period that we're in were ARPA funding dependent. And so, now that the ARPA allocations have been made, I just want to highlight, and some of these things overlap, but these are based on the figures that Will had pulled together for the different buckets of funding, the different goals that the, that the ARPA funding was intended to address. But there was, one of the action items was for community violence interventions and over $3.5 million of ARPA funding has been allocated to organizations that are addressing that. Promoting health and wellness and community safety, almost $6 million of ARPA funding was allocated for those activities. There are action items related to reducing homelessness and supporting affordable housing. We made, or the council made, $1.7 million worth of home ARPA allocation so far out of a total of $3 million. And then, in an effort to reduce housing costs for those that need it most, there's over $4 million worth of ARPA money that was allocated for that. And also highlight that we have now published online the resource manual for victims of violence and that is going to live mostly online just so it can be more organic. We'll print out a few copies in case people want those, but we'll be making palm cards so that there's a QR, there'll be a QR code on the palm card that people can just scan and get access directly to the latest version of the guide. And we'll be providing some of those to you all just for your information and in case you encounter anybody who's interested in, in any of those resources that you'll have the palm cards as well. And then, Tim gave some of the updates for the strategic area number three, infrastructure, when he made the presentation. But the one thing I would just encourage you all to take some time to read in the CIP is how we incorporated the equity lens into prioritizing in the CIP. And we'd like, you know, just some feedback on that because I think there was a lot of creativity shown in public works about how to do that. And so, we're just really interested in what people's reaction is to that. And then finally, we continue to do our recruiting efforts on a variety of things related to economic development, including a grocery store, a hotel, and various things like that. So, you know, these things take time, but we're making progress. And at some point soon, since these goals were supposed to be two-year goals, we'll be talking about a process to get them updated for the next two years. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Carol? Mary Alice?
So, Carol, I don't pretend to understand the craziness in terms of how cannabis dispensaries are allocated throughout Illinois, but one of the things here said that you, the city had reached out to the license in Vermillion County that was denied them, but they couldn't reuse it in our county?
Right. These things are tied to certain geographic areas and we, and we noticed that they had been denied and so we thought, well, let's just reach out and see if there's any possibility that they either have a license, you know, a license in our area or that they could transfer it and they couldn't. But we're very interested. We're not, we're not, we're not shunning these folks. We're embracing these folks, so...
Oh, and I appreciate that. I guess what I'm trying to figure out, because I don't understand the ins and outs of that rule in terms of the geographic locations, are we, is our county, is our city eligible for a vendor to be able to be here?
I think there are, there are three or four right now that have champagne county licenses of some kind. And so, the funny thing is, you'll see that in that same item, it says letters were sent. They don't provide, or the state doesn't provide a lot of contact information, so we had to go old school and just send them, you know, snail mail. But we, there's only a handful that are, that actually have licenses that we know of that can, that they could locate in Urbana.
And there's no way to go back to the state and say, hey, they can't have it here. Can we transfer it over here?
That's more for the license holder to do than for us.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Grace?
Thank you so much for the update. I do have a few that I can try and go through quickly and other things that need a follow-up. That's fine, too. My first one was for contracting with and completing the public safety review.
Yes.
Said, mentioned the social pinpoint site.
Yes.
I don't know if you could tell us more about that? Did we already know about that?
I'm sorry?
Was, I don't know if that was already shared. This wasn't sounding familiar to me. It sounds like a...
Yeah, that's, that's the name of the, of the website that Barry Dunn has put together. So, if you go on the Urbana website and you just, the Barry Dunn tile is in the, the sort of, it's one of the squares. I don't know what you call that, but it's a highlighted thing on our, on the landing page for our website. And if you click through that, you'll get to, you will get to the social pinpoint site.
Great, thank you. And then similar question for the manual published online about resources for domestic violence. I wasn't finding where that one was.
That's, that comes through the police services. I can get you the link for that.
Thank you. Yeah, it'd be great to share with the public and at large. Other one was about enforcing or enhanced compliance with housing for human rights ordinance. And I saw the update here about the resolution and clarifying some of the interpretation of, I think, just discrimination in general, which I think is great.
Yes.
And then I guess my kind of question was, you know, what's our, if we have a next vision for next steps on, as far as now that we've got that clarified, anything else on enforcement or maybe getting the Human Rights Commission a little more involved?
I think really what, what we need to do is we have, we have a vacancy in that office and we really need to recruit the individual into a position that we're calling a human rights specialist. It's a, it's a new position that we created to help support the efforts in, in this area. So, I think we'll be able to do more once we get a person in, in place there. That was approved a month or two ago at Civil Service Commission.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, good to hear that plans for other directions. Another question was about green revenue bag fee stuff. Saw the updates there and I know this is an ongoing discussion that we still will loop back around to, but I'm still curious on, you know, as you mentioned here, what those sacrifices or things that would be curtailed might be and also the option of expand capacity. I think as I mentioned, this is something that I'm open to add a position, increase the budget, do what we need to do to be able to make this happen if we can't expand the capacity is another option.
Right, I think we said when, when that item was up for discussion a couple of weeks ago, we'd be back in about a month. And so, I have, I have a note to myself and I'll give you a better report in a couple of weeks.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I think that one's good timing as we're thinking about budget stuff.
Yeah, and, and we've taken that into consideration in the budget.
Which was a similar one with the SWIFT program saying that we recommend updating that goal and this, imagine also maybe a larger conversation on ideas how and if that would be maybe monetary support or what other ways we want to pivot, especially as we have budget conversations coming up soon.
Yeah, we don't, staff doesn't have any specific suggestions for that. So, if you have some ideas, that's, that we can talk about those, but really in terms of changing that action item, I think we thought about that for, that should be one of the things that is taken up when we do our 24, 25 goals.
Thank you. And then last one was about the Public Realms study. We had, you said initial temporary activities and installations are being developed. I didn't know if now or at a later time, we could have a little bit of info from that, especially just since that study got kind of a lot of attention.
Right, yeah, we're, we actually heard an update this morning about that and there's some really, I'll say, fun, exciting ideas that the economic development folks and public arts and all them are, are coming up with that are, that are going to be nice, temporary, scalable ideas that are, that are going to be, I think, give us some great opportunities to leverage the opening of the hotel and to do some things that we haven't been able to do downtown before. So, we'd be happy once those come together and we get some better sense of, of what we're, our real commitments will be. We'll be more than excited to come and share those.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to public input. If anyone wishes to address the Urbana City Council, please come up to the microphone and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor Barland and members of the city council. My name is Eldridge Mullin Akar and I didn't have any prepared comments. I just wanted to speak on the ordinance number 2023-05015. That's related to the purchase of the real estate.
Can you speak into the mic?
At 125 Bradley Avenue. Can you hear me?
Yeah, that's better. Just move a little closer to the mic, please.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Pull the mic down so it'll be right at your mouth.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, related to the relocation of the fire station and there's some concerns in, in our area. I understand that there was an open house and of course, I've been dealing with other things related to Dr. Ellis, no pun intended, putting out other fires. So, some residents are concerned about, you know, the relocation that's near our, you know, area. It's going around the corner, but it's deeper in the Dr. Ellis, really a few streets over from where I live. I think there needs to be a better job of informing the residents about changes such as these. It's a major change and it's a change to the fabric of our neighborhood. And just as the consideration was given to the WUNA, I think it's the West Urbana Neighborhood Association, when they had a situation that, you know, would have changed the character of their neighborhood, we want the same consideration that they had. So, we don't feel like we had input on this change. I wouldn't have labeled it open house because maybe public hearing is not the right term, but some term to let us know that this is going to change the way this neighborhood's going to look. There goes, there's going to be some changes that you might want to consider. So, that's, we're asking to reconsider this plan based on some concerns that our neighborhood has about the relocation. And I think that's it. Just, we'd like to have a voice. So, I just wrote down voice. We don't feel like we had a voice in this process. So, thank you.
All right. Good evening. My name's Almax Axrod. I'm a resident of Ward Three. I live by the current fire station, actually. I'm, I understand this position that the city is in. I've led multiple organizations, some you have never heard of, and no matter how hard you try as leadership, the message sometimes doesn't get through. And I've iterated on outreach efforts and it's something that I know you all are doing too. Earlier, you had moved, I think it was agenda item 2B, over to June 5th for a special city council meeting. I understand that that's not necessarily a plug and play. I can't necessarily ask you to do exactly that step for agenda item 2A. I get it. And I also get that you did the technically correct things. And that does give you the right to continue on. Ward Three has been heavily gentrified. We have one census tract that doesn't even have life expectancy data because it is so dense with college students. I know because I live in that census tract. I processed the data for the Cunningham Township when I was an intern there. It's the census life expectancy data set done in 2015. And so, what I'm seeing here, which is, I know not intentional, it'd be not great if it were, is the movement of a fire station away from some apartment complexes into a residential area and a sensitive one at that. So, I ask that some additional consideration is made here to just try and do well by residents so that folks know that they're heard and understand exactly what's going on. Because this is very similar to the situation with Lyman Gardens where the city did the technically correct steps. And because there's now this timetable, folks wouldn't have known about it if we didn't flag it in our solidarity committee meeting. Just watch agenda items to try and make sure that we can let people know what's going on. It's nothing elaborate. It's a very basic thing. I'd like to see more people doing in their community. Like, that's how much the message missed the mark here. So, I'm just asking to say like, yes, the firefighters deserve a facility that will work well for them. I get it. And I don't think that the communities, the concern of some folks, especially some who couldn't be here tonight for health reasons, that the least that could be done is to pump the brakes a little bit on this and to try again to do outreach in an order of fashion a little bit better. That being said, I also talked, well, I sent an email. Thank you, Sharice, for reading that email last week about the Starbucks Workers United vote last Tuesday. It passed 19 to 1. I personally know Starbucks workers in Peoria who are retaliated against. It is a very real concern. So, I'm not asking for you to move heaven and earth. Even a social media post would be fine where you're at the Starbucks having a union solid, a union strong coffee. For those who don't know, you can order coffee, say your name, and then just say "union strong" afterwards. They'll put "union strong" on the label. Quite nice because they get to say "union strong" in their workplace. It's a very... It's a very healthy and cathartic way of supporting unionized workers who are struggling. That's why they unionized. 19 to 1 vote? That's pretty impressive. So I'm just asking that you go there, you speak to management, they're the ones wearing black usually, not the green. Just say, like, "I have some concerns here. I want to make sure that you know that we want folks to be treated well here." Like, that's, that's all that has to happen. You don't have to be super confrontational about it. So, you know, next time you feel like you need a coffee, a brownie, or anything like that, please, it's, it's not going to take too much time out of your day. Lastly, I don't know that organizations I'm a part of would agree with those palm cards, but we distribute damn near 100 booklets plus a month. We could look at the palm cards and see. Have a good one.
Seen anyone else wish to address the council tonight? Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. There is council input and communications. Any comments from council members? James?
I'll just say, and this will be the last time, that the Southeast Urban Neighborhood Association is having their annual meeting, 7:00 PM this Wednesday, two days from now, at St. Matthew Lutheran Church on Philo Road. Hope all the neighbors in that area can join us.
Thank you. Sharice?
I just want to kind of respond to the issue regarding the purchase of the land on Goodwin and Bradley. And the purchase of that land may or may not be for the purposes of relocating the fire station. That's one thing. The other thing is that we, the open house that I gave information about was held right here in this room, and it showed the conditions of our firehouses that we are, that we are currently trying to replace. And those firehouses are in horrible shape. And the fact of the matter is that what I want is a state-of-the-art firehouse with, that, that will have enough room to serve our community and serve the firefighters that are on duty, and serve, and protect the apparatus and vehicles and so on and so forth that are used for the many calls that that particular fire station gets. Those firefighters are, have been on, first responding for several, several instances in our neighborhood. And even not our neighborhood. When Mont Olive caught on fire, Urbana's fires, that fire station was the first one on duty. First one there, in freezing cold conditions. I know personally, and I can't speak for other people, but I know personally, just for the response that I've gotten three times, and at our house, at my, for my mom. And they are right there. But I've also had to watch, watch them maneuver miraculously. It's like taking the Enterprise and docking it, basically, watching those, those firetrucks try to, to go back into that, that station. And I guess what I, what I want is, we can definitely, you know, have some more community engagement regarding that, but it's not, it isn't like, there's been total ignoring of the community regarding this, because we have, actually have had opportunities, people have had opportunities to make their, their opinions known. But the other thing is this, is that in June, there'll be another opportunity for you at King School. And I'm hoping that people, and I'll make sure that I put it on my Facebook site, and that folks know what the dates are, and I'm hoping then that there will be some engagement. I have not heard any real complaints, one way or the other. People are always welcome to email me. People are welcome to call the number that is on the website, and I would happily talk to folks about that, that particular issue. So I just want to make that known.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. One, I've been invited to have a cup of coffee at Starbucks, and I'm going to go there on Friday morning for informal conversations with the workers at Starbucks, so I can report back what I hear, but just wanted to hear how things are going over there. And secondly, with the, related to the issue of the fire stations, we have made an attempt to reach out. I'm sorry, not everyone heard about it, but I can tell you the feedback I've received. And as you know, most of the calls that our firefighters go on are for medical emergencies, not fires. And when in the case of critical incidents like stroke, or heart attacks, or serious injuries, every second counts. And the folks that, who have learned about relocation of the fire station are actually appreciative of it being closer to their homes, because it could mean the difference between life and death, or recovery, or living with permanent after effects of a serious health incident. So, so there's, there's a fair amount of support for that location. And I want to remind folks that these stations are not for the benefit of the firefighters. It will be much better working conditions for them, but the primary purpose is to better serve the community. And that location was determined after a great deal of thought to be a much better location for a facility that will provide both fire and medical services to the north part of the community. Okay, we'll move on to reports of standing committees. Christopher Evans.
Okay. I want to first make a motion to bundle the consent agenda items A through M and into one omnibus package. That's the motion.
I'll second.
Point of order, since it's the consent agenda, why does it need to be bundled? It's all one thing we vote on in any case.
Yeah, it's, it's already been bundled.
Yeah.
So we don't need a motion? Okay, great, all right. So therefore, I would move that the following resolutions be motion for approval, Resolution Number 2023-05-059R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an ARPA subrecipient agreement, University YMCA. Resolution Number 2023-05-056R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an ARPA subrecipient agreement, Housing Authority of Champaign County Youth Build. Resolution Number 2023-05061R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an ARPA subrecipient agreement, Urbana School District 116, Community Engagement. Resolution Number 2023-05-060R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an ARPA subrecipient agreement, Urbana School District 116, Alternative Education. Resolution Number 2023-05-057R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an ARPA subrecipient agreement, Housing Authority of Champaign County, Steer Place. Resolution Number 2023-05-058R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an ARPA subrecipient agreement, Housing Authority of Champaign County, SRO Project. Resolution Number 2023-05-052R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an ARPA subrecipient agreement, Urbana Park District. Resolution Number 2023-05-064R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an ARPA subrecipient agreement, Justin Peterson. Resolution Number 2023-05-062R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an ARPA subrecipient agreement, Urbana-Champaign Independent Media Center. Resolution Number 2023-05-054R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an ARPA subrecipient agreement, Cunningham Township. Resolution Number 2023-05-055R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an ARPA subrecipient agreement, Champaign Township. Resolution Number 2023-05-063R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an ARPA subrecipient agreement, Champaign County Healthcare Consumers. And Ordinance Number 2023-05-013, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, namely 903 North Division, 1605 Wiley, and 1107 North Gregory. All those motioned for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Mary Alice. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next will be the regular, regular agenda, omni bus with the following resolutions. I move for approval, Resolution Number 2023-05-042R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Agreement, East Central Illinois Mutual Assistance Center, Newcomer Immigrant Student Support. Resolution Number 2023-05-041R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, Community Development Block Grant Agreement, Rape Advocacy Counseling and Education Services, Survivor Services, Trauma Therapy. Resolution Number 2023-05-045R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Agreement, Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Central Illinois, Community-Based Mentoring Program. Resolution Number 2023-05-046R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Development, I mean, Agreement, Champaign County Regional Planning Commission, Youth Assessment Center. Resolution Number 2023-05-043R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Agreement, Crisis Nursery Safe Children Program. Resolution Number 2023-05-044R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Agreement, Dream Hope Scholars Mentoring Program. Resolution Number 2023-05-040, I mean, 40R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Agreement, Rape Advocacy Counseling and Education Services, Survivor Services, Trauma Therapy. Resolution Number 2023-05-047R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Agreement, Solagration Agricultural Education Program Center. Resolution Number 2023-05-048R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement of State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Agreement, Steam Genius DBA Hip-Hop Express, Urbana Loving You Tour. Resolution Number 2023-05-049R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Agreement, The Well Experience, Well Kids Learning Hub. Resolution Number 2023-05-0450R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Agreement, Urbana Neighborhood Connections Community Study Center. Resolution Number 2023-05-051R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Agreement, Urbana Neighborhood Connections, Urbana Youth Development Program. Resolution Number 2023-05-034R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, Youth Services Agreement, Business Elevator, 21st Century Readiness. Resolution Number 2023-05-035R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, Youth Services Agreement, Champaign-Urbana Public Health District, CU Farm to School. Resolution Number 2023-05-038R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, Youth Services Agreement, Urbana Park District, Fresh Teen Hangout. Resolution Number 2023-05-039R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, Youth Services Agreement, Urbana Park District, Outreach Swim Lessons. Resolution Number 2023-05-037R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, Youth Services Agreement, Urbana Park District, Pickup Basketball League. And finally, Resolution Number 2023-05-036R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, Youth Services Agreement, Urbana Park District, Youth Scholarship Program. I move all these resolutions for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Mary Alice. Discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Upstain.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Okay, we'll move on to the regular agenda. First item is Ordinance Number 2023-05-015, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real estate, namely 1205 Bradley Avenue in Urbana, and I move this for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Sharice. Discussion. Mary Alice.
So I want to summarize what I think is going on here, and people, please feel free to correct me if I'm wrong. So we, we basically have an existing firehouse on Lincoln Street. It's quite small. And the vision is to, I have a much larger station, and the current property that we have there just isn't suitable for that tile of a firehouse, in terms of how you get the trucks in, whether or not you have, how difficult it is to, to turn, the turn radius, and the parking, and et cetera, which is one of the reasons why the city decided to look for a property that would be more situated in terms of the needs for the firehouse. So I think, I mean, at least, I was on the council when we voted originally to purchase the property that was just north of where the existing house was. I mean, it was our understanding that it was going to stay there. But when we started to get through the designs and really look at what the needs were, it was discovered that that site was just no longer suitable for what we needed to, to accomplish with the new firehouse. So for that reason, I'm going to vote for, for this particular item.
Further comment? Sharice?
To piggyback on what Mary Alice has said, the other thing is that at the time when we, when we purchased the other part of, you know, that what was closer to where our station is now, the corner lot was, that corner, other corner lot was not even up for sale, I don't think. That corner lot was up for sale for two years. I saw a for sale sign every time I drove down Goodwin and Bradley, and there were no takers, as far as I know. And, you know, is, is, sometimes it's not, it's what, what is also available. It's not always what's, you know, if, what's necessarily probably the most convenient. And I believe very much that every firehouse in the city is situated within a neighborhood of sorts. Philo Road, that their firehouse is also their- Philo Road, that their firehouse is also, there are houses, apartments, and everything else. This, even this firehouse, there are houses right here on the side, uh, the south, uh, south and going north, we have house, uh, apartment buildings, the 200 North, uh, 200 Vine. And as often as I sit here during city council meetings and see the fire trucks go, I never hear the fire trucks, even though we're practically right next to the firehouse. So, I think that something definitely regarding sound, work, so on and so forth, can be arranged, um, regarding a noise level that, um, um, that my community might be kind of, um, fear of, afraid of, that, that all of a sudden, everything is going to be, there's going to be a, a whole lot of noise. I hear sirens going down Romine every day going toward OSF. I understand, we don't want a noise pollution issue. I do get that. But I also think that, um, the city manages to keep, um, the sounds of the fire, the fire trucks here even, quiet enough that I'm, I don't think I've ever heard of the fire truck when, when I've seen it go down, down Vine Street. Um, and I'm sure that that kind of situation, should we end up locating the fire station on that corner, can also be accommodated for, uh, our community. But the other thing is, I think because of the services that the fire station in our area already provides, I think it would be a, a really great example, a really good opportunity to introduce some of the young people in my subdivision to this profession, to this career. And something that they don't even get to see now, let alone experience, or to broaden their horizons, that this too could be a, more of a community firehouse. So, I'm hoping that, that would be taken in consideration when, um, when people in L. S. subdivision start to actually, if, if in fact that happens, that when they start to see, this could, this could be something that could actually be a, a kind of a hub for the community. And hopefully, uh, uh, an area where young children, young kids, because we've got a lot of teenagers in that area, would be able to feel comfortable going and, and being able to, um, interact with those firefighters. So, that was something else that I, that I considered when, when discussing this particular thing. Thank you.
Grace.
Thank you. I'm also overall in support of this resolution to, our ordinance tonight, as far as the land acquisition. But I definitely agree with needing more community outreach and input before final decisions on the use, um, and construction designs for if we have the fire station there. Um, I think that community input and education, just awareness of what's going on will be really important. And we could maybe have some designs, looks like there's maybe a little tree line, but have some other kinds of sound barriers. Um, overall, this is, it looks like it's going less than half a mile away from the current location, maybe closer to less people overall, can't quite tell. But I think that we definitely owe some thought and consideration and opportunity from input from the surrounding neighborhoods about this. Um, I understand some of the challenges of living close to the fire station. I'm pretty close to the Philo one and understand having to block the road when they're backing it, uh, out, or backing back in. Um, and so hopefully, this would be less traffic, um, and similar kind of noise distribution. Uh, but again, I think that it is essential to have input from the community themselves. Um, and my question was, um, would this require a rezoning or any other kind of step for determining the use for this property? Um, like I was thinking about when there's notices on people's doors and there's, you know, some commission hearings and opportunities for input. So, I didn't know if, um, we had information on what the process would be for this property moving forward.
I just want to be clear, um, that this will be the site for the fire station there. I mean, we're, we're buying it for that purpose. So, in case there's any lack of clarity about that, um, and there's no rezoning that's required.
And so, sounds like then there was not a plan for input from the community? Is that correct?
I don't know if we were going to go out again, once we had, like, you know, final renderings and stuff and, and just to share with people. But at that point, we're very far along in the process. We got the feedback at the open house, in part was about, um, you know, the, the physical appearance, you know? How did we want the roof line to look? And how did we want the, if, if there was going to be a, you know, like a central organizing element of, you know, to, uh, like a fire tower or something? So, um, I don't know that there would be an opportunity for input that we would then respond to versus just keeping the community informed. But, you know, I mean, uh, Sharice had mentioned early on, when we, we were talking about this site as a possibility, about the issue of sound. And we spoke to the fire chief about it, and he said, "That's not, uh, anything that's unusual about, you know, holding off on, uh, starting up the sirens until they're away from the, uh, single-family houses." So, um, not, um, I, I think we've anticipated some of the concerns already, and, and we can handle them in an operational sense.
Thank you. And about the, the open house, so I have some concerns about that. As I recall, that was almost exclusively, um, fire department staff, which I think is very important to hear from, and then council members. Um, and I don't recall there being much actual public input. I can't, I don't know if you want a chance to speak after, um, I didn't catch that. Um, so I do have some issues with that, and I think that more input from the public is needed, rather than kind of anticipating it for them. So, I actually think that I'm not in support of this, just out of concerns that there won't be an opportunity for input, um, besides after, as you said, when it's too late. And I think that's just not a helpful way to have public input as a notification after it's too late to take anything into consideration. So, I find that disappointing, um, and I hope that we can at least address some of the concerns in our own limited ways. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay?
Just, just one quick thing. No, Grace, it was open to the public, though. It wasn't just about the fire, the firefighters and the city council was open for anybody that, to come in and look at the, and to get, because the whole purpose was to get information from everybody in the community as, what, how did you want to see your fire station? Or how would you like, it, because it wasn't just about the, as my understanding is, it wasn't just about the Lincoln. It was also about the Philo Road one, because we have also purchased additional property regarding that too. And we've, we've talked as a council many times about, um, different things that we wanted to see, you know, what we thought the community would want and all that kind of stuff. And so, it was, I remember it being open to the public and actually being announced during a couple of city council meetings. So...
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
I have Chris, make, oh.
I ju- I just wanted to add, uh, I don't remember if it was one week or two weeks that we left, um, that there was, we had a link on the website for people to give feedback if they weren't able to attend the open house, that the slides and stuff were on there. So, that wasn't the only opportunity for people to fi- provide feedback. So, just wanted to put that on the record.
Grace.
Uh, thank you. I recall the situation. I, I understand, I agree that it was publicly available and we advertised it publicly. My point was that my experience ever, having been there, is that it was almost all police department staff and council members, and maybe their spouses or friends, um, had conversations about this with Ma, I think with Tim. And I would be curious too about if there were many feedback surveys after that event, um, because I just have serious concerns that although it was open to the public, it was not meaningful public input, because it was all coming from internally, where we've already discussed this. And so, I think just because it wasn't well attended, doesn't mean that it kind of gets us off the hook, as we did it once and that's it. And if people didn't attend, then that's on them. I think it's so important to give people opportunity, especially if it's about a specific new location in a certain area. So, I am curious, um, if we have any of that information on that input, how much was actually from the public versus how much was staff and elected officials?
We don't, I don't know that we have specific information on that, but I think we had, um, two or three that came in post the event that I know are public feedback. Um, they're not from staff or public officials. Um, if I recollect, there were, I'm going to guess, five to seven public members that attended the, that were not in a staff capacity or a, uh, public official capacity. But we didn't have formal designations within the surveys to designate that.
Okay, I have a motion by Chris. I didn't write down who seconded that motion. Sharice? Okay. Alright, I think we're ready to vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
No.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Uh, that motion passes. Thank you.
The next item on the regular agenda is resolution number 2023 dash 05 dash 53R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an ARPA sub recipient agreement, Champaign County Environmental Stewards, and I motion for that approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Abstain.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Chris. Uh, we move on to reports of special committees. There are none. Reports of officers, seeing none. There's one item, or no new business, and then one item under an appointment. And this is to the Human Relations Commission for the term ending June 30th, 2026. And I am pleased to nominate or appoint Ann Panthen for your consideration. She's an eight-year resident of Urbana. She works part-time as an Information and Archives Assistant at the Urbana Free Library. She currently serves as the Vice President of the League of Women Voters of Champaign County, where she manages meetings and represents the league at statewide functions. Previously, she was employed as Deputy Director of MedCAD at the Champaign County 911 Center. In her statement, she stated, "I'm interested in community service and have pursued opportunities over the years in various ways. The Human Relations Commission interests me because as a city, we must do a good job for all citizens. If someone feels they've been the victim of discrimination and feel strongly enough to bring a complaint forward, it's important to have serious people that will listen and review the situation to make sure we get to the truth of the matter. Citizens need to be feel-hurt in a serious way. The commission exists to hear allegations brought forth by the citizens of Urbana. So, as a fellow citizen, citizen of Urbana, I'm happy to be in a position to listen and to give serious consideration to the situation." Is there a motion?
I move to approve Ann Path- Panthen, Panthen to the Hum- uh, Human Relations Commission for the term ending June 30th, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second. Grace.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Grace. Further discussion? The clerk please call, oh, Grace.
Uh, just quick input. Thank you for the presentation and the background. I especially like being able to hear the blurb from the applicant and appreciate that this individual is willing to take things seriously and their considerations, and sounds like willing to do some of the hard work ahead with the Human Relations Commission. So, I appreciate that, having that information and being able to hear that from the applicant. So, thank you.
I would note that this is a nine-member board, and there are three other vacancies. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. And with that being the last item of business, this meeting is adjourned. And there is no meeting next week.